Let me share my screen. So hello, everyone, and welcome to the January 26, 2023 meeting of the Gilman Square Civic Advisory Committee. My name is Ben Demers. I'm an economic development planner with the city of Somerville. We'll start this meeting with a roll call vote to see members in attendance. So let me start with Diana Marsh.
Here.
Melinda Conies.
Here. I'm here.
Awesome, thank you. Ram Kelith. Not here. Casey Babbitt.
Here.
Jack Lister. Lisa Natal. Jamie Cragg Millie.
Here.
Thank you. Jennifer Kerber.
Present.
Perfect. Brittany Vetter. Okay. Michelle Machado Marrero.
Present.
Ben Algar. All right, I know Ben is probably joining now. Okay. Jesse Klingon.
Oh, you know what? Strike the record. I thought you said Counselor Kerber. I thought you just butchered my name. And I said here, I said present to whoever was before Michelle Machado. Yes, Jesse Klingon present.
That was Jennifer.
Jennifer, I think he's here. I just am seeing self muted.
The sound is still not coming through, Jennifer. I, this makes more sense. And then, Ben, you in Kempin? Okay. And then Rachel Nedkarny. Awesome. Thank you all. Welcome to the meeting. The first item on our agenda is to look at the meeting summary from the October 27 meeting. If everybody has had a chance to review. Does anybody have any comments about the meeting summary? Looking like no comments. Okay, great, thank you. With that, we'll shift into our, let me actually first bring up the agenda for the meeting. So just on the agenda tonight, so as I mentioned, starting with this roll call and approval of the previous meeting summary, we'll then move into a public comment period. We'll then have a discussion of the community meeting next week. So talk about the goals of the meeting and the role that the CAC might want to play. We'll then talk a little bit about the history of the Gilman Triangle, what we've learned thus far. We've just been looking a little bit into this from the city. No wild updates, but at least kind of show you what we found thus far. And then we'll move into other business not reasonably anticipated by the CAC. We'll then leave time for a second public comment period, and then we'll adjourn the meeting. So with that, we can move into our first public comment period. And at this point, I'd like to welcome any attendees in the meeting who would like to speak at this point. So please feel welcome to raise your hand or put a question in the chat box. I know. Go to can be a little bit difficult to start. There will also be times to speak later on on any of the items that we've discussed. Okay. Not seeing any, any hands up thus far. And let me just check if there's any questions in the. No. Okay. So that will move into the second agenda item, which is discussion of the community meeting. So, and I apologize also, I have multiple screens here, so it'll be a little bit of seeing the side of my face. So at the last CAC meeting, I know that we discussed having a potential community meeting in November, December. Obviously, we're now looking at the beginning of February. Things shifted a bit with trying to make sure all the city staff who needed to speak on this could be there. So currently, this meeting is scheduled for next Wednesday, February 1st, from 6:00 to 7:30. And it's going to be held virtually through Zoom. So flyers have been shared with the CAC members and posted on the city website. And those flyers, as well as the event itself, are available in English, Spanish, Portuguese, and Haitian Creole. So we wanted to just take some of the time in this meeting to talk about what the goals for that meeting are kind of based on past input. And then leave space to talk about what the role of the CAC could be in that meeting. We've talked a bit about this, but obviously want to hear what, what role y'all would want to have in that discussion. So the goals of the meeting, the main goal truly is to provide updates regarding essentially different things that have happened in the city over the past year since the last community update, which was in March of 2022. And specifically giving updates, it's about the entire Gilman Square area, but especially kind of focusing in on the home insight. So we're trying to cover a lot, so we'll start with more mobility related updates. So in relation to things like the GLX station opening, as well as the community path and kind of logistics around that. We'll also then talk a bit about the status of working to get art on the TPSS building. I know that's been a discussion for a while. Something that a lot of community members have expressed interest in. We then will also hear from our engineering department about the blood master plan and its impact on Gilman. I know that's also been a discussion that's come up in the past year. We're then also going to hear a bit about the development potential for the site. And then we're also going to talk about temporary uses on the site. And this is really guided by some of the discussion that we had at our October CAC meeting and other sort of temporary uses that have been suggested. And then during that meeting, we also want to make sure that we leave time for, to hear from the audience of that meeting, what they could also imagine as temporary uses on the home insight. And this discussion will probably kind of encapsulate both the home insight and Medford Street and potential activation of that space. So, yeah, we want to leave room for anybody who has, you know, specific uses that they would love to see on the space, specific communities that they would really want to see outreach to, to have a time to share that. And then all, obviously, because we're going to be sharing so much information and have several different city departments there, we want to make sure we can answer any questions about the items that are discussed.
So as we transition into thinking about role, the thing that really stands out to us is one of the hopes for all of you, and we've been talking with our other partners, the Gilman Square Neighborhood Association as well about this, is just making sure that we're sharing, sharing out about this opportunity to hear updates. I know this has been a topic for a long time about, you know, how does it all relate, right? How does the stormwater piece relate to development of the property? What's the, how does that tie into mobility changes, GLX, all those pieces coming together? And so it's a lot of information. But we do want to make sure we're getting the word out as much as possible. So we would ask if it's possible to ask all of you all to just share in your own social networks, particularly neighbors and others who might, neighbors, colleagues, Jamie, for yourself, and others who might be interested just to know what all, like how this all comes together. And where we are, I mean, it's really a status update and a lot of these things. About where things are and how it all comes. How it all relates. So I will add that as the first. Note here. And we will record this meeting as well. So for folks who aren't able to attend that day, we will have a recording.
Can you tell us how much new information are we going to have? Are we going to be hearing from the city particularly about that stormwater? The stormwater report and the timing of the storage tank and things like that that affect this site? Because it sounds like there's, there's a change in timings for the site where it might be won't be available as quickly as originally envisioned. And that's why we're looking at temporary uses. So that seems like the biggest change at this point.
Exactly, yeah, that's, that's part of why we've been holding off on having this meeting is to make sure that we can pull that information in about where things landed on the stormwater master plan and what that means in terms of timeline. So all that will be part of the presentation.
Okay, so then in terms of the role of the CAC in that meeting. So, I mean, because there is so much information coming from city departments in this meeting, we had talked a bit about ensuring that the CAC can be involved in the more like interactive pieces of the meeting. So, A, during the activity in the later portion, because the CAC has already had some conversations around temporary uses of interest, which I'm going to seek to relay that information in the earlier part of the temporary use conversation that leads up to the activity. But as we're encouraging people to, we're going to use a jam board essentially and allow people to add to it. And then also like speak up about what they're adding to the jam board and have more of a conversation in that way. We talked about the potential for the CAC to sort of help facilitate that, to be some of the first speakers of that section, to kind of set the tone, to also be like directly calling on people. So whatever role the CAC would be interested in having in that activity, very interested in co facilitating. And then we had also talked about during the beginning of the meeting, we definitely want to acknowledge community partners on this. So having the CAC, you know, speak, somebody from the CAC speak for a minute or two about sort of what the work of the CAC specifically does. And then we could also, and this is why I'm hoping, I know that Ben is in the attendee space and hasn't been able to access the staff space, but I know there are other members from the GSNA here, but also having the GSNA speak at the beginning of the meeting to talk a bit about all of the work that y'all do, just so that people really understand some of the community groups that are kind of active in this space. But would love to hear other, oh, sorry, Rachel.
Let me say, just as a, while, so if Ben, if Ben Algar, if you're stuck in the attendee role where we haven't figured out how to get you moved over, you can still raise your hand and we can call on you. So that's still an option as well, if you wanted to speak. Just, if Ben Demers, if you were trying to get feedback.
I see his, his hand up. But I'm also not seeing an opportunity to unmute you, Ben. Whereas the other attendees have the option to be unmuted. So I'm not sure what's happening tech wise.
Ben, can you elevate me to organizer, or is that possible? And I can see if I can.
You can help, so I used the link that was just sent out like five or 10 minutes before the meeting to connect with GoToWebinar. So I don't know if that was a panelist link, maybe Ben is on some other link that wasn't a panelist link.
Potentially, I sent him, I sent out the panelist link also directly when I saw that he was in the attendee space. But yes, that's, it might be that. Okay, well, let's still leave the space about the role for community groups to speak at the beginning and talk about y'all's work. But thinking about other ideas for the CAC specifically, are there other spaces where y'all would imagine wanting to be more engaged in different parts of the meeting? Curious to hear any thoughts.
This is hard to know what we could help with when we don't know what, like if there's going to, I don't know what information will be presented to us about stormwater plan, for example, and if that is the main thing that moves up development, then.
This is, the tricky thing here is that we're trying to make sure that everyone's getting the message at the same time. Next message that it, I think it really is going to take much of the hour to pull all this together. So my thought says is that this is a pretty place to hold things at the moment is that, as we've been sort of debating about how to structure this, to have a role for both the Gilman Square Neighborhood Association to describe themselves, have a chance for a representative of the CAC to describe the work you all have been doing this past year. And then to, as we, since you all, as the CAC members and them as the Gilman Square Neighborhood Association, have been really the, the folks who have been following this project most in depth in all of these projects, right? So it's not just one thing. But sort of have you all sort of take that sort of initial step of helping people get over the, sometimes at these meetings, we have a little bit of a hurdle of people getting, feeling comfortable voicing an opinion and sort of being those first voices at the microphone to say, hey, this is what we, what I, like, this was my idea that I brought up. Or, you know, I had heard this from a neighbor or something like that, just so that we can start pulling all those pieces together as we're adding new voices to the, to this, right? Because the goal is that at a community meeting of this scale, we're bringing in the voices of folks who don't have the bandwidth to be following as closely as you all are. We wanted to sort of check in and make sure that that feels comfortable to everyone here as well, as we're getting prep for next week.
Because you don't have any idea how many people are going to be at the meeting next week.
Yeah. I think our last meeting, we had about 60 in attendance.
So do you know whether you'll have, like, if you have a lot of people, will you have breakout rooms or will it be a big discussion?
Yeah, so it's, it's almost certainly going to be a big discussion. Obviously breakout rooms are ideal when there are that many people for like having smaller conversations. And we had thought about the idea of, like, would the CAC want to facilitate different rooms? The issue that comes into play there is that translation services immediately become extremely difficult when you do that. Yes, because, because then you need to have, like, all of the different translation services available in each breakout room. So in the conversations with our translation and interpretation teams, like, it's really, the encouragement has been to kind of stay in one space, which obviously means that fewer people get the chance to speak in the end, because you're all in that same space. So jam board obviously isn't perfect, but we are really hoping to kind of encourage people as much as possible to be adding to that in that way. Yeah.
Okay, this is Jennifer. I'm actually going to be out of the country, so I'm not going to be able to attend the meeting. Is there any way to, to either seed the jam board to start things off or to otherwise help with this process, even if I can't be physically present or, you know, virtually present?
We hadn't really talked about that, but Rachel, I think that would be fine. Yeah, at the very least, I could be, I could sort of like relay things that, some of the initial things that you added, even if we want to show them being added, like I could always add them kind of initially and say, oh, so a member of the CAC expressed some of these interests and uses and add that in that way.
Right.
And. So.
Do you want some of us from the CAC to present, like, some of our findings from the site walk? Or is that something that the city should recap? If people, if nobody's like speaking up, it seems unlikely, you know? And we need somebody to, some people can start the conversation, we can do that.
Yeah, well, so I know that in one of my slides, I'm going to summarize some of the main things that came up from that discussion, but I can essentially, I'm not going to go into that deep of detail. Or I can, I can hold back on going very deep into detail and just say, oh, these are some of the uses that were suggested and some of the precedents that were looked at. And then really kind of leaving y'all at the beginning of that activity to give more detail.
Hello? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Ah, thank God, okay. I tried calling in, that did not work. That was pretty disastrous. So I think there are a couple of things that I wanted to bring up about the structure, because a lot of people are going to be learning a lot of new things at this meeting. And some of people are going to be there in the meeting. And so I think people want to be able to respond to it even after the meeting. They're also being asked, told about a lot of things, but then we're only going to be collecting feedback on the preferred temporary uses. And I think a lot of people might want to respond to the other things as well. So is there going to be an opportunity either both during the meeting? And can we broadcast when and other vehicles for collecting that information? Because I want to make sure, well, one thing that we keep on getting at the, at the Neighborhood Association is that people want the information, they also want to know how they can respond. And if they can't make it, they want to know how they can respond, right? So, so it's, it's very hard when they only get the very, the next step. And they don't have the couple of next steps to see how they can continue to contribute. So I was just wondering if we could have that now, so people who know that they can't attend don't feel like they're, you know, kicked to the curb. Also, I think my understanding is that there might be some things that might not be new for, for folks in the know, but that might be new to people who haven't been up to date on exactly like the plans for development of a home insight. So I, I think that people might be a bit surprised and I want to make sure they have an outlet that they can know, you know, like, add or respond or the way to respond.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of the best sort of out of meeting response vehicle. I mean, we can talk about trying to find ways to, obviously, this is just about the temporary use piece, but I'm trying to make the jam board otherwise accessible so that people can add to it in other capacities. I know we're also going to stress kind of meetings like this, like future CAC meetings as spaces where people can, you know, stay engaged with the project. But obviously.
Yeah, I think there's, I was going to say, Ben, just as you're thinking that through too, is there's, there's multiple components of this, right? Like, there's the stormwater master plan pieces, which engineering is really coordinating and quarterbacking in terms of, like, how does that, how does what happens in Gilman tie to the rest of the stormwater system? And that's, like, that's their purview that we need to make sure that those comments are getting to them. And so we can work, this is a really helpful button, because we can connect with our colleagues and make sure that we have, like, for each of these elements, right? Like, if there's a mobility question, you should go to the mobility team around, you know, what's happening with the, you know, GLX stuff? If there's questions that people have as they're first interacting with the new station. So, yeah, we can work on what those pathways are.
Yeah, and it might be, I like how you're thinking about it too, because it might be the best responses to, you know, if it is literally a gallery of people coming in and presenting, which sounds lovely. It'd be great to know that if you have, like, I know there are some people who have a lot of questions about the stormwater management and like, not all those conversations are going to be happening through the CAC. So it might be better to have visibility into the next meetings for that. So I don't know if there's a way to include that as well.
I'm, I've been doing, I have actually, it's Jennifer again, I have another question. That, so this is a one hour meeting or more?
This is, it's a 90 minute meeting.
90 minute meeting, okay. I just, there's an awful lot of information that's going to be presented. And again, with Ben, I'm, I'm wondering if we, excuse me, will be overwhelmed? And then if they get to the, again, they get to the part where they can only collect feedback on the preferred temporary uses. I feel like that might either get buried or lost in there. And honestly, it's a, it's a thing that's actually very close to my heart, because I, I'm just very much looking forward to seeing what we manage to get in there. So I just want to make sure it's given its, its time without taking away from any of the other stuff. And I apologize for kind of bringing this up, but it just, I, I've been doing a lot of this kind of meeting lately with my work. And so it's fresh in my head.
Yeah, we had also scheduled time for a general Q and A and it's a good question, are we ready? How much, we want to make sure there's some level of, we were trying to come up with, is there some way we can do, which aspect of this is the most interactive and the most interactive part? That's really like where there's input now, that could be really helpful is on the temporary question. And like, what do people know, what do people want to know as we start getting deeper into what temporary looks like? Because it may not be, we're going to collect a lot of ideas, but I think also there's going to be a lot of questions about, you know, what are the steps involved and all of that that are going to be really helpful as we build our, our ask for the funding to figure this out. But there are also definitely going to be a lot of questions on the other components. And so we were trying to figure out what's the, how to balance those two. And so right now, we have some time established for both, some time for general Q and A, some time for interactive jam boarding, the temporary pieces. And then we, we really have been sort of aiming at the, like, because of, because of the translation services staying as one conversation. And that, that may be challenging for folks who want to have a more in-depth conversation as well. So I know, Counselor, it looked like you were about to say something as well, and then I probably jumped in too quickly.
Not me, no, I just was, I just got, I just can use my camera now because of, on my laptop. I mean, I have a lot of thoughts on all of this. You know, one of them being, if we, you know, I understand as a city, as, through the clerk's office, it's, we've been working on getting Zoom, but why can't these outside meetings be, be Zoom versus GoTo?
Still haven't gotten the official go ahead that we can do that yet.
All right, well, I'll just talk to you, I'm, I'm just curious what the roadblocks are, because I know, like, like, I think school committee uses, like, there's certain pieces of the government that are using Zoom. And I understand why institutionally, we, we haven't been able to switch, you had contracts and so forth. But for some of the, anyway, some of the thoughts I have on the meeting itself, first of all, you know, obviously, this is all pretty under wraps. Like you said, you want everybody to hear the information. I think that's something that the CAC should make clear, so that people first coming into the meeting understand that, you know, we're not necessarily, we're finding out information at the same time as, as the public is. Because to Ben's point, I don't know who's in the know, but I certainly am excited to hear what's happening. And I, I hope that it's something exciting. I mean, it seems like it's probably, I don't know, I, I hope that we're moving towards a plan, a, a real plan. You know, I know that Rich has listened to the commentary from many different people around why does the tank even have to go there, this and that. So I hope that all that feedback has been synthesized and that this is going to be something that feels like we're moving forward. We're not, you know, because CAC has been in existence for a year, a little over a year. And I know that, you know, people get impatient and I just hope that we can feel like we're making progress. So I would say to the group, as a group, like I said, I think this is a meeting where we're, I guess, co hosting in a way, but, but ultimately finding out information and participating just with everybody else. I have, I have some more thoughts, but I don't want to, I don't want to ramble, but I'll let somebody else talk. But I just, yeah, I just hope that we, everybody feels like this is a step forward, that this meeting is actually leading towards something and that it's not another starting point. That's my, I just, that's my frustration.
So I'm thinking again, and one of the things, you know, Jesse, kind of how you were thinking about, there's a lot here, right? To cover in one meeting. And I almost wonder if it's two meetings and not just one. I wonder if it's one, like, where we hear updates and we can respond to that updates visceral, get better channels, you know? We risk focus on that. And then there's another about temporary use, because people might confuse the two. And, and, and people are going to have a different response about, you know, about, about them. And I, like, I'm really excited that we're having, you know, this community meeting. I'm someone who thinks more is better. I think they're true and they could, I think more would be better in this case, where we could have one focused on the updates and response to the updates and, and what to do to get involved in that long-term vision. And then another about, like, you know, more temporary uses and really focused on, like, what, what, the here and now that a lot of other people also want to tap into.
I mean, I'll leave that to the team. I think that, you know, I'll just make a quick comment on that. Ben, your idea is good, but that's assuming that there's a substantive update. And this may just be, you know, no offense, folks, but this may just be a not so, you know, it may not be as much of an update as people's expectations are up. So it may just be more, you know, this, I think the one thing, and Rachel touched on it, I think it's important to remember, because even I, you know, I tend to forget is that the economic development team isn't, aren't the decision makers on a lot of the stuff. So they're just kind of bringing us together. And so I think, you know, understanding, like Rachel said, who the players are and what pieces and so on. And, and how that there, you know, if there's discussions happening between those departments, they certainly don't involve the CAC and they certainly don't involve the council, counselors, you know? So just so you all know that, but, so I'm like, just, you know, excited to hopefully hear something new as you. But it may be that we can just get it all done in one. we can just get it all done in one meeting because well, it may not be a whole lot to discuss around those, that, the update from Rich and the team.
I think almost like a, a non-update is still an update. If, if we're going to hear that things are going to take a long time to make happen, that's news for some people and they'll want to respond to that. And that's whether it's, you know, about the fact that we have to wait on getting the bike path open by us longer because of, you know, the high school, you know, like, all of that is is stuff I've heard, but I don't know that people who are going to show up to this meeting, they're going to know about that. And I'm sure they'll have various responses that we can't really anticipate. So, you know, again, if I like, I, I think it's a different idea that the long-term stuff versus the temporary stuff. I, if the meeting runs short because we exhaust all the questions or people don't have feedback, I don't think that's a bad thing, but but I just, I think that confusing the two would be, is, is the thing that I worry about the most. I don't want people to confuse temporary things with long-term goals.
And not to get into a back and forth, but I will just say, this isn't the CAC's meeting, otherwise I would say we could vote, maybe vote on that, but but this is actually the city's, the city's meeting that we're attending. But points well taken, I think, you know, hopefully the staff's listening and brings that back and, and I know that this is moving so fast that I don't, you know, this meeting kind of came up quick. I'm sure they're trying to get, you know, a bunch of stuff in at once, but I, I agree. And I think that would be, you know, I'd be amenable to that.
Yeah, this is all super helpful feedback as we sort of finalize what this structure looks like and put together the materials. We just want to make sure that we're you know, tapping, part of the reason we have all of you all together is to because you all have such different like networks and different voices that you're representing, right? Like, you know, different people. You know their appetite for coming to a meeting like this and what they, how they might react. And so this is, this is all really helpful information for us to consider as we finalize.
That's a good point, Rachel. And if we, we're trying to reach out to say like, the, the folks at Pearl Street Park, you're right, they may not, they may not get into the weeds so much of the, of the stormwater stuff as they might want to know what's happening in the shorter term. So it's a good point. I still think that Ben is on to something. Because I do think that a lot of the folks that are there will probably really want to drill Rich and and folks and really try to, you know, put some ideas out there, depending on whatever they updated. But anyway, that's all I'll say. I'll, I'll open up to other people, but I just, but that, I, I see that as well. I see that as a good point with regards to the different people that may be there for, for different information. So.
I feel like, kind of echoing what Ben said, I think, that I think it'd be good to limit the presentations on some of the material to updates only, because I feel like we've already had pretty detailed presentations on like the streetscape design and the bicycle networks. And I know they were, I mean, that was maybe like a whole year ago until they refined the design a little bit, but if we start over with square one with all of that information, then people are going to be so overwhelmed of all of the different topics. And it seems like the, the big change is, is you know, that we're going to be planning for some temporary uses now, recognizing that the permanent changes are going to be farther off. And so explaining why, explaining to you why those things are maybe farther off, which is apparently a combination of the economy and the stormwater tank and whatever else is contributing to it. Kind of explain that. And I would imagine that people might want to talk about those, those assumptions and reasons plus what kinds of things they want to see as temporary.
Any other thoughts on this one before we shift gears to talking about the research? There's been great feedback. Hearing none, seeing none. I think Ben, it's your.
So Rachel, before we move on, did we, did we, did we figure out? Do people kind of understand and what the CAC's role is at this meeting? Or are we, is there any role for us to do anything? Go ahead. Sorry, Rachel.
Great question. So I think we landed on, if everyone's comfortable with it, sharing out seems that'd be our preference would be if everyone could just help out with sharing out those flyers. Digitally, if you want physical flyers, we can definitely print them, drop them off with you right up the hill. I think we've got to think about what this, if we are going to get into this temporary activity, we can send you all an email if that is if something changes, we'll let you know. Maybe we sent out an email one way or the other about how that's going to play out. And then I do think it would be, we would love to do this activity. This was something that really just came up this morning as we've been starting to put together slides for both the role of the CAC, but also the Gilman Square Neighborhood Association, just as, as our partners who are following this a lot more closely and counselors, of course, as always, giving you all a moment to say something. And so what we were thinking is what might be great is just to say, here's what you've been working on the last year, highlights of the group, highlights of, I think Ben Elgar, for your purposes, like highlights of how things have been going with GSNA. I know you guys have been growing and have a lot of interesting things to share out. And to talk about sort of just for a minute or so. So the question was, is if there's anyone who wanted to sort of represent, be the representative of the CAC who could do, who would want to take that on as a one-minute intro, or if you want staff to do that, or one of the counselors.
Jennifer won't be here, right? Should we be out of country? Is that?
Hopefully somewhere fun.
Michelle, Melinda, Diana, Ben. Jamie, anybody? We'll just give it like a two, you know, yeah, two minute little spiel.
So Diana, that's your volunteer?
I can talk about the walking doors that we did, yeah. I'm not sure what else. I mean, are you talking about recapping the kind of long-term that we heard on long-term uses for the site, or we're just like how it looks now, what we noticed when we got worried to walk around the site?
I would say a little, like a, a couple of seconds on each, right? The, all the conversations that you all were helping facilitate just to get that check-in again with folks on what their visions for the long-term look like. And also the site visit, I think that was really, those are both good highlights.
And I would just say that however you want, whatever you want to convey about, about the body, that, that, the CAC, what you want to let, you know, what you want people to know about, about this, about this group, about this body. And we don't need to, you know, ask staff what we, what you want to say. You can say whatever you want. In terms of, you know, because we are, we're operating, you know, in our own sort of capacity.
Does anybody else want to speak also? I get, and Ben Elgar, you're going to be talking about GSNA?
Rachel, is that what you were thinking?
You or anyone from the board. We haven't had a chance to reach out to the others yet.
Yeah, we, we can, we can figure out. But yeah, yeah, if I'm going to say something in that capacity, I should definitely not say something also.
All right, I will write that down. So.
Yeah, it'll make sense that, I think Ben and Diana should just kind of do a little duo thing about the group and then somebody from GSNA that's not part of this group should probably say something. So that will come up with somebody that's likes to talk over there. Again, that's just my suggestion. Do whatever you want.
Yeah, I think it'd be good, I mean, if you want to, Ben, if we both kind of just chime in and tag team, talk about what we heard at all the previous meetings and what we saw when we went on the site visit. Do that for like two minutes. Is that going to be before the city presentations on all the different topics like stormwater? So we don't need to go into depth on, we don't need to go into those.
No, but we're also welcome to sort of, when we then move into the activity later on, to sort of like reiterate, like, you're welcome to reiterate at that point, you know, things you were seeing and how that informed. Maybe at that point, you could talk about like how the things you had mentioned earlier, what you saw on the sidewalk, like how that informed temporary uses that people were thinking about. Just to get this conversation started for the activity later. But that's just one idea, whatever feels comfortable.
And we will send everyone an email with conclusion on that. Are we doing an interactive thing on temporary uses? Or are we just focusing on Q and A about everything else?
Okay. Are there any other questions or thoughts about the role of the CAC? Okay. And I also, I see that we have some questions coming in. I'm going to have these for the public comment period that we have later in the meeting, just so people don't think these are getting ignored. But I'm going to shift into talking about a bit of the history of the Gilman Triangle site, which is not going to be a super long discussion. Unfortunately, I wish I had found, you know, a million more facts about it. But just wanted to give a little bit of context on this. So based on some discussions previously, I think with the CAC and with people at the city and with the community of trying to talk about what, what this site has been in the past. So we're talking specifically here about the triangular park at the intersection of Medford and Pearl. Which obviously, on that sidewalk in September, we spent a while looking at and talking about, and that was actually where we met to, to start the walk. So we have been working a little bit on our own and also with the city archivist to try to find just kind of more information about what the history of what that site has been. So we were at least able to find a lot number four, working with the assessor's office. So it's lot 61D1B, with the address being 252 Pearl Street. The lot is about a little over 12,000 square feet. Through this research, we were able to determine that the, the city of Somerville is the current owner. However, part of what has kind of come up in this research is that we don't actually know when the city took possession of the parcel or even when exactly it became a parcel. So in some of the earlier research that I was doing, when I was looking at essentially atlases from the late 1800s, early 1900s, as you can see in the 19, or the 1895 outlets of Somerville in the top right of the slide. It just sort of ends with the, with the straight edge rather than being the triangle that we know now. This might have just been part of the way that they were recording what that space looked like. And they didn't include the park just if it wasn't like a private parcel. But it also might be that it was open road at the time and it did not become a park until much later. So that history has been a lot more difficult to find out when exactly that actually became an individual parcel, the way that we would imagine it would show up on a map like this. The city also might have owned a larger piece of land here in the past than it does now, since our city archivist was able to find that in 1982, the city sold part of the area to, like at the eastern part of the lot to Gilman Square Associates of roughly 6,000 square feet, so about a half of what the size of it is now. Used to also be attached and was sold off. We don't know a ton about that transaction, but that was something interesting that the archivist found. We also know that earlier on, the building directly next door was called the Citizen Building. So it's a little bit difficult to see probably in this slide based on the size that it is in, in go-to webinar. Let me see if I can zoom in a bit. Yeah, so looking a bit at this. So this used to be something called the Citizen Building, belonging to a duo named Mulliken and Moore. And then at some point, that area came under the ownership of Gilman Square Associates, who I mentioned, kind of bought part of the, the eastern part of the parcel. So like I said, we haven't been able to find a ton about the site and our city archivist hasn't been able to unearth a ton. But part of the reason that we even presented here today is to also say that, you know, if there are other records or other things that people are encountering about this area, please share it with us. We'd love to be kind of adding to this history of the site as we go and getting a better sense of it. Yeah, it, it just really helps us to, to know sort of what this piece has been used for historically.
Is Gilman Square Associates the ones that, did they build the Paul Street and senior housing building? Where's that? Is that on the?
You know, I actually don't know extensively what they've done.
It's also interesting to see there's a YMCA right there across the street, though.
Yeah.
Back.
Shit, not super in-depth, but are there any other thoughts that this brings up for people or?
Just that I think it warrants, you know, I, I'm pretty sure that I could be wrong, but when, you know, you talk about seven hills in Somerville, those all have names and then the different squares people will name. I don't think Gilman Square still is an official square. Like listed. So I think this kind of confirms that, you know, this, this isn't something we just made up. Gilman Square has been on the map for quite some time. So I think it's just an interesting, I don't know, just point of reference to say that Gilman Square is a good name for the area and what we can, what we can do there.
Yeah, seeing it as early as the, the 1909 atlas. And there's probably earlier mentions of it as well. Cool. Okay. Well, with that, I think we can move into other business not reasonably anticipated. Which can also I think differentiating between this, if there's anything else that a member of the CAC wants to bring up, and then we'll also have that public comment period, that second public comment period afterwards. But in terms of other business not reasonably anticipated, is there anything that anybody would like to bring up or share?
Because I'm, I'm wondering about the, the long-term use of the site. Is it, I mean, even if the economy is not doing well now, it seems like ideal time to be planning for what we want to see in the long run. And maybe even thinking about RFP and drawing out some criteria based on all the work that we did as a group last year. And has that just been shelved or is there something in the city? Maybe you'll talk about it.
Yeah, this is going to be one of the topics of next week is just to sort of piece all this together with the stormwater master plan. And what does that mean in terms of timeline to timeline to prepare for an RFP? So we'll tie it all together and then come back as a group with you all and with all, with others to really dive into how we move that forward.
Can we include in that conversation to the access issue that we had discussed about seeing if there's another way to get access to the train station from Medford Street or from a flatter area?
Yes, it's also part of this question. Great, great point.
I have a question.
Sorry, who just spoke?
Oh, that's Ben. So I had a question as well, which was this, this history in particular is particularly nerdy, right? It's like transfer of, of land and it's, you know, mysterious, but there's not, no names, no faces, you know, not, nothing like that. But when we do get history that is maybe a bit more relatable, because it illuminates how people lived here more clearly, is there a way that we can celebrate that? Because I think it is pretty exciting when it does become a window into how we want to continue to live in this space.
Yeah, I would, I would love that. I think that's why I definitely encourage if people are finding additional things to please send it in, because I would love to see sort of more, more faces to this history and like actually hear about people's lives within the neighborhood and how this little triangle might have played into it or the way they were using it.
Yeah, I think especially, I think Jack had said he had remembered used car lot of some form, some sort of car lot on that site in like the mid-century timeline. And with us one that we've been trying to track down. And so I feel like this is a great question if anyone runs into neighbors who are here at that time. And maybe, I mean, this is a great question we could bring to Pearl Street Park residents and any of them who have a longer term history in the area.
I have two, two quick things. It's getting loud here. I don't know why all these people are here so early. One is recruitment, like replacement for some of the members who One is recruitment, like replacement for some of the members who have dropped off. And then the second one is the lawsuit. I know that's not in our purview, but I think it's of interest to everyone. I mean, the city is being named in the lawsuit from the guy Jim Kaplan. And I think, you know, a lot of people would like to know if, if there is an update at some point, what's happening with that?
Intriguing.
Yeah, I heard rumors that they were sort of getting close to maybe coming down to a settlement, but I don't know what the terms are and I just want to, you know, I'd like to know officially what, what the deal is, if it, if we're there yet or hopefully we're almost there. Because, you know, Barack and these other folks who have shown interest in some of the other parcels, I have been at a standstill because of the whole thing, so.
Can you describe, I, I don't know nothing about this lawsuit. Describe what?
Rachel, you can go.
You have more information on this one than I do.
So the, the, Jim Kaplan owns the piano building and the Good Gas site, which is on the, the right of it. Elon Sassoon had a project going that everybody in the community worked really hard to, to get where we wanted it to be in terms of, you know, the different benefits and so on. And then on the other side of that is the ABJ Park, the lot that used to be the Autobody Place ABJ. And that's owned by a single owner Barack, who also has a really great project that he has shown the community. And Jim Kaplan, he didn't want the, he, he wanted a few different things, but ultimately he, he sued the city and both of those individuals that were working on, that had Moylan. I mean, who's no longer interested in the parcel and then, but the lawsuit was against, I think, the Good Gas people and Barack. And he just had some different terms that he was trying to get people to come to. One of, some of them which that none of us supported. And so, you know, the city listened to that and I think that, you know, so once that's worked out, like right now, everything is sort of on hold for both of those parcels on the left and the right of the, the piano building. I can answer more questions if you have anything specific question. That's kind of the gist of it. Is that this gentleman, gentleman filed a lawsuit to, because he didn't want the buildings necessarily, he didn't want them super close, you know, variety of reasons. And then we can speculate as to, you know, what his real motivation was, you know, I don't know. But Ben, you want to jump in?
Yeah, I mean, part of the concern, just to clarify, was that the piano building is zoned differently. It's zoned for fabrication. And so the, the other parcels right adjacent aren't zoned in the same way. Then part of it is for continuity, like the building that is currently used for fabrication is owned for fabrication. And right now we have a gas station, that's not fabrication, we have a parking lot, not fabrication. So Jim Kaplan, who owns that building, was, was concerned that he was being treated different than the neighboring buildings with different development opportunities. And so that's what, there was questions about how those parcels could move forward. And, and I think that's, and yeah, I'm also not familiar.
No, you know what, you, you refreshed my memory though. That is the main crux of it right now is that he sued on the grounds of spot zoning. He said that Wyatt, his is, he's in the middle of two MR, five or six zone properties and his is fabrication. But the city specifically wanted to preserve as much of like his building type. And what happens in there is, does lend itself to fabrication. So yeah, he was a little bit upset about that, but hopefully they'll get things worked out. We can, we can move forward down there.
And, and the current, the other, other factoid that are fun, the current fabrication doesn't, even though the fabrication is in a high pedestrian traffic area, doesn't have clear language about how the first floor should also cater to that, which would make sense, right? You don't necessarily want to have fabrication and people walking by fabrication. Everyone, everywhere is like, where's our coffee shop? And Jim Kaplan's like, I'd like to have one on my first floor. So like, I think the, the other question was, you know, how, how can, how can all of these needs or, or all of these things come together in a more helpful way for the neighborhood? And so, you know, hopefully that's what's getting sorted out.
So while I don't have any updates to share on the lawsuit, because I just don't know. There is a, a hearing coming up at the city council and the planning board on Thursday next week that's related to this issue that Ben was just describing.
The issue of fabrication in general, the issue of?
The issue of fabrication on pedestrian streets.
Okay.
I think the sticking point was for like Jim Kaplan's building where there's plenty of other fabrication. So the first floor wouldn't really, is a perfectly fine place not to be fabricating if it is going to enhance the street activity. What happens when you have a single floor fabrication building? Can, is that no longer fabrication? So there's a question of like, maybe it's 60%, 40%, you know, versus 60% or you know, we're splitting floors now. So they just wanted to, I think part of the conversation was what, what kind of rubric, rubric would be appropriate? And, and how, and, and one of the questions was how many buildings are actually like that? Single floor fabrication anyway in the city. So they had like numbers and it was like in the five, seven, something like that. But yeah, that's as much as I know.
Yeah, the lawyers are working it up.
Sorry, I'm just, what, what exactly is defined by fabrication building? What, what can you do in a fabrication building?
I mean, you can do, it, it's, it's a designation that like has to do with production of, it, it, it's actually captures a wide, you can look it up in the zoning book. It actually caps a really wide net over what that exactly means. Rachel, maybe you can give some examples or something about some of our other fabrication buildings.
Which doesn't mean having a coffee shop? That's just what.
So, so to, to Ben's point, when we, the question now is whether or not in keeping with this active street area, how do we deal with a fabrication builder that's in an active street area? We want to activate that, that ground floor, because everywhere else is going to be activated around it. Should we allow for, for commercial on the first floor, even of a fabrication building?
So fabrication mean commercial?
The other examples, fabrication is a mix of basically manufacturing and artist buildings. So if you think about Vernon Street Studios, which is a mix of Brothers Foam Corporation, they do manufacturing, but they also have artist studios. There's also fabrication is generally some, some combination of sort of heavier arts production or manufacturing production or a combination of the two. And so these are usually our legacy structures where those are happening. And there's this particular instance of what happens when that kind of structure falls in a location where you have lots of pedestrians. And that's the, that's the discussion that's going to happen on Thursday next week.
Like we need to keep those funky locations like that, because you know, everything, everything else can be zoned for commercial on the bottom and then residential above or lab space, like, you know, so, so fabrication is very valuable to us as a community. So we're trying to figure out a way to keep it, but also make it make sense at the neighborhood level. So I think that's the crux of it. He talks to the DSNA more because the lawsuit, I don't talk to, I haven't talked to the Kaplan and his team because, because the lawsuit, but so if, if that's, you know, one of the terms of his, I think that's, you know, I'm down with it.
I mean, we, we talked to him because he's a member. He has a lot of interesting things to know about.
No, it's fine to talk to him. I just, I know that I can't because of the lawsuit.
Yeah, I get you. But I think the other thing is the spirit of fabrication, like if we're talking about craftsmanship, like there, there are a lot of things that can work as, you know, commercial and crafting, which is kind of the, the legacy we're trying to celebrate with, with that, those spaces. And, and particularly also hits us in Gilman Square, because this, uh, this intersection was known for a lot of the really cool stuff being built here. And that is still being built.
Yeah, you know, 226 Pearl, the building 226, it's just after Pearl Street Park. There's like, I think one other building and then that used to be like a peanut, peanut factory or peanut butter factory. And they turned it into apartments. Actually, my older sister lived in one of the like, it was really cool and like, it was interesting at the time. This was back in the eighties, after it wasn't a factory anymore and they made it into apartments and stuff like that. But um, yeah, it's, I don't know what the, it probably had a lot, obviously had a lot to do with the train, you know, being right in the back there. Able to ship out their peanut, peanuts, peanut butter. And then Rachel, another on the development front, the, the sign building, though they call it the, that was, is that, I don't know what the address is. Is it Skilton or is it like the, the other property that's?
One next to.
Also one that I do not have any updates on.
But I don't even know like what I honestly, all I know is that there is a proposal.
Not that it has come to the city.
Okay, it has leaked out and like, so people, yeah, people know that they, they have a concept or something. But yeah, there hasn't been any meetings on that yet.
Yeah, often these conversations around, especially, so the purview again in the CAC is focused on just these two little pieces. But what does happen on the other areas often is had in the neighborhood before it ends up with us. So you all may engage with developers before they make them, make their ideas known.
Well, I think it's important to keep the CDC as part of the conversation, because you, I think, didn't you say something about it? I mean, what if we go back to the idea of, of like a master plan or something like that's, that's, that's a whole.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, so hopefully you make that decision soon.
Yeah, we're, at this point where we're at is that as far as we are aware, that have, there are no official applications in any of those surrounding parcels yet. But that doesn't mean that they aren't already in conversation or they are in deal making stages and you know, things might be moving, but they haven't quite reached the point of of a proposal that is formed enough to to share with the city.
Does our CAC have any, any ability to, to propose goals? And, and for the, these surrounding kinds of parcels that are right across from our appointed site? You know, or to weigh in on that or recommend zoning changes or anything like that? Or is that, it's just?
I think that's more in the purview of the Gilman Square Neighborhood Association. And since there's so much overlap, that's probably where it will stay. But to, to Rachel's point, but I just think as we move forward, I think it's of interest to all of us, the different things that are happening down there. It's kind of one affects the other. But, but Rachel, I don't know if you feel the same way. Probably will stay with the, the Gilman Square Neighborhood Association's been doing a great job negotiating benefits and so on down there and making recommendations.
Yeah, I think really what, where the CDC comes into play is are the properties that the city, city or the Somerville redevelopment authority are involved in developing directly. And that is the home and site and potentially the triangle, right? And so that's why the focus is so narrowly limited to those two. And absolutely the Gilman Square Neighborhood Association has been very active in talking with these other sites to figure out. So Ben might know a lot more than I do about where things are on these, on these other locations.
I don't know, I'm just saying, your economic development, but, but that's all right.
Sometimes, sometimes they come our way and sometimes they don't.
Okay, so are there?
Sorry, Ben.
No, I was just going to ask the same question. Are there any other items that CAC members want to bring up before we shift to any comments or questions from the public?
Sorry, the, the one other thing that I think might be helpful, just because of the way Rachel, you were framing things is if, yeah, if, I know the community meeting is not just about the CAC. And you just highlighted that, right? The CAC is specific for these parcels. And I think maybe the committee meeting, that maybe, maybe it's for you and me, Diana, to, to just make sure that we keep the focus on what the CAC is doing, specific to that part. Because if someone's like, streetscape, what's going on? We're going to be like, or Rachel is going to be like, not, not this, right? That there are other people talking about that, like we, we might know things, but it's not, you know, they're, they're leading it. So I, I just, that was really smart and I just want to make sure we carry that through. Cause I think that's the kind of clarity that's very hard to really get unless you show up all the time. And even then, sometimes it doesn't stick with you.
Rachel, do you have any final thoughts on that? I know you're taking notes, but.
I think that makes a ton of sense, Ben. It's, there's, and it's so tricky, because we've got a lot of overlapping. First, you know, there's so much overlapping information, but as much as we can help folks understand where they, and I think this is a great point that several people brought up earlier is where do you plug in on different topics? Is an important thing for us to sort of conclude on our meeting next week. Because if you want to talk about what's going on on these sites, we would love folks to come to these meetings and participate in those public comment periods. As I'm sure all of you would as well, because that's going to lead to robust conversation. It's really then, it's more about the other pieces that are contextual and important, but contextual.
But Rachel, can I just say one thing? I'm sorry, I don't mean to be pushy, but the whole reason why I'm talking about the other parcels and stuff is because until we pull the trigger on whether or not we're going to go beyond, have we decided that we're just sticking with those two parcels or has, has that decision been made? Or we move it, could we move on the mobile? I'm not saying I want to do any of that, I'm just, I'm just curious, what has, what has come down as the, the maneuver here?
That's a great question. So it hasn't come down because in large part, we've been waiting for the stormwater question to be answered. So I think this is a good topic, maybe that we do think about bringing back as our next conversation is after we have the stormwater information, and I want it to come from the horse's mouth and not me, because I will butcher how we talk about stormwater. That, that is a great question for us to really start digging into is the advice of you all, as you know, this diverse group of folks who represent Gilman Square. Should we continue to focus on these two pieces? Do we focus on one and not the other? Do we focus on bringing, like trying to connect in mobile? Do we focus on a broader game plan? These are great questions.
I mean, that's going to, just, once we get to that decision point, it's going to require a lot of public input, you know, public meetings and stuff. But I like to hear from the public now as a matter of fact.
And with that, we can shift over to public comments. Okay. So if any members of the public do want to speak, please raise your hand. I know that we also have questions coming in. I will be straightforward that viewing all of the questions is a little bit difficult on this software. So if you have a question in there and you are comfortable raising your hand, please, I would encourage it. You can kind of ask your question aloud. So I'm going to call first on Torio, Tori Antonino.
Hi there, everybody. I'm kind of plugging in like a little late. The Gilman Square Neighborhood Association came both to the to Green and Open Somerville and to the Gilman Square Neighborhood Council to discuss stormwater infrastructure, building structure, planning ordinance. And I, I know you said that this is not the purview of this committee, but I figured I'd come and say hi. And just see, seeing what's going on, you know, as, as neighbors on the other side of the hill. And that's about it. I, I did ask a question, you know, trying to figure out how that ground space gets activated. And, you know, community centers are something we're dearly lacking and, and need. And I don't know if that's something that can go in there. I also heard at some point, there was discussion, discussion on the, what was Alon Sassoon? discussion on the what was Alon's assumed property. Well, three thirty two Medford, I think it was, like, maybe that was going to be a community center. So, yeah, so just hi, everybody. Um myself, again, we're we're kind of getting plugged in with the Gilman Square Neighborhood Council and Green and Open Somerville and just thanks for your work and any information on a community center if you have or 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 not, I'd love to know. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Tori. Right. Um I see also Christine's hand up. So Christine, I'm gonna unmute you. It sometimes just takes a second. Okay, I might be having a tech of tech difficulty. So Christine, we'll come back to you if that is the case. Okay, I'll shift to Vicky Peterson.
Ah, great. Thank you. Um I'm just going to reiterate the comments that I made in the question chat, uh which is are you able to hear me? Sorry?
Yes, yes, sorry.
Okay, lovely. Um which is the, I'm just a bit worried. I I it's it's very helpful to know that the CAC really is about city owned properties or or properties that you're planning to develop. So that's actually a really nice distinction to have. Um I'm I'm a bit worried that if you jump right to, let's figure out what we're going to put on the home and site temporarily. That people may hear that as a decision has been made about the stormwater and we're now in a holding pattern because of the tank. And there's a, there are a lot of people who have a lot of questions about the tank and feel like our voices aren't being heard around that. So I think that if it's accurate to say this is not meant to be an indicator. I mean, what, no matter what happens about stormwater, there's going to be a lag. Whether it's a year or, you know, or longer, what do we want to put there now that the construction is winding down? Um it would, I think that might lead to less of, less consternation.
If it's all right if I jump in and respond to that, Vicky, that is exactly the conversation we were having in October with this group is that it there is that same, there's that question of, is it a year or is it more? And we've been waiting on the stormwater answer. Um but either way, there's going to, there's a lag time now that we have the site back from Green Line Construction.
I mean, our fear is the the number that's we're, you know, we're all afraid of is it's going to be ten years because we're going to put a big tank there and and it's going to delay construction and development and and dictate the type of development that can happen there. And and but but everyone could understand, like, it takes a year to get anything moving. And that really we are looking at, you know, that timeframe until we know more. Thank you.
Yeah, so thank you so much. We'll make sure that that message, we will have something to, something from the folks who can speak stormwater better than me next week.
Okay, um so the last hand up is Christine Carlino. Um Christine, I'm gonna try to unmute you again. Again, I apologize if you're having any tech difficulties.
Can you can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can. There we go.
Sorry, I was on my cellphone and I couldn't figure out how to unmute myself. Um yeah, I I I don't want to harp on the same thing that Tori and Vicky just just brought up, but um I just want to point point out, and this is not something anyone would know unless they were in the field um of environmental remediation. But the how how the process works uh for with the EPA is that um, you know, Director Raish has put together this stormwater master plan, but it's actually not going to get submitted until twenty twenty six. That is, that's when it gets submitted. That's not even when it gets approved. Um and during that time period, there is going to have to be an alternatives analysis where they look at green infrastructure. It's actually mandated that they look at green infrastructure. Um right now, the city is saying that it doesn't work, but for I I I don't understand why they they don't think it works when it has worked in every other progressive city in the country who has taken this on and also saved them, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars, in some cases, multiple billions of dollars um not doing these projects. And the the implications of you know, the the schedule for doing these gray stormwater, which is these tanks, um we're talking about a decade plus. Um just just to get through the process and the planning for these and do all of the downstream projects uh before we even get to Gilman Square. So I mean, this is a long, long term process. Um and green infrastructure is something that can get us could completely eliminate the need for for these tanks, especially in Gilman Square, and do it in short order. I'm talking a year to two years out. So I mean, this is, this is huge. And what's frustrating um from a community standpoint is we've been having these conversations with city engineering for multiple years now. Um and keep getting the brush off and none of these implications are ever brought up in a public realm. Um and even when we ask the pointed question, how long is this going to take? We get a very wishy washy answer. Um and I think the the community needs to hear it from Director Raish that this is, these are, this is what we're talking about. We're talking about ten to fifteen years or we can find another way of doing it. And 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 start thinking about how our community can develop and change and be a healthier, better place for all of us to live in the next year or two. I mean, that's that's huge.
All right. Thank you, Christine. Is there anything else you wanted to add?
Um actually, so Matt's here too. Can I let him talk as well?
Hi, everyone. Um so I'm a civil engineer by background. I'm a contaminated sediment expert. So I'm an expert on what happens when our C S O is discharged into the water. And the the multi-billion dollar projects, the remediation of that involves. And we have been leading a coalition of residents towards a green infrastructure solution. And I actually encourage everybody to go to the meeting next week because um I mean, it's been easier for us to get Mast E P and the EPA on the phone and to show them what our proposal is to to basically eliminate the tank than it has been to work with Rich Rage. And EPA wants to know because during this alternatives analysis phase, there's going to be this talk about community benefits and community goals. So if you guys don't like the hearing of a tank and want to have green streets and pollinator gardens, um we're going to have a meeting on our meeting for Gilman Square the following week. But we've got contacts for you to actually C C your correspondence with the city. Um so when you actually email planning or Rich Rage to actually C C the EPA and Mast E P, because they need to be a part of this conversation. Because green infrastructure is a preferred approach by the EPA. It eliminates a lot of pollutants from getting into the stormwater system and impacts a lot of the aquatic environment that when these pollutants go into our wife, Brooke, or the Mystic River, they actually endanger our habitat. So there's one thing about just storing polluted water. And there's another thing about pre-treating polluted water. And there's a chance that EPA might require them to do a green infrastructure anyway. It's part of the negotiation for their long term control plan. But what I'm trying to say is, if you want to see green infrastructure and you don't like the tank, there is definitely a vehicle for you guys to email to our region administrator is Todd Borchi. And if you guys want more information on his and Mast E P's contact info, we can provide it. Sorry for battling.
Oh, that's okay. Thank you both. Um, okay, I'm not seeing any other hands. Um so with that, we can close public comment. And then the last thing on our agenda today is just moving to adjournment. So I can't remember the exact date of our next meeting. Um it's the same fourth Thursday of of February, so see if the first is a Wednesday. I believe that's the twenty second or twenty third, um but we'll obviously send out more messaging and we'll post that on the city website ahead of time. Um Rachel, is there anything else you want to add before we adjourn?
Are there any follow ups from members of the C A C telling to quote comments that you heard? I hope I did an okay job of collecting notes. And we can take some of the notes. Um there were a couple of other notes from the chat, just to make note of them. One related to the triangle. Uh, okay, City Quares Triangle, it looks like someone who has some background on the triangle added uh City City Quares Triangle personnel in September eighty one, originally to expand Medford Street, which was designated as a state highway. There's a book and page number. So we will, thank you for that. That's from Matthew Goldstein. So we can take a look into that research a little bit further and see if we can find anything on what that looks like. Uh you see, and there was a note from Stephen Nutter about Map Junction, again, thinking about the research. Um so these are some wonderfully helpful comments. So thank you all for that. I'm just trying to see if there's anyone else we missed in those. I was able to blow it up on my second screen. Uh Tori, if you know, had said something about can we do a community center satellite on the first floor? Community centers have come in many instances, and I feel like in the conversations that have been happening around the site in different form formats. And I think everyone else's comments, it looks like have been addressed. Um uh there was a question also from Stephen Nutter about is this the stormwater master plan is being presented as fully baked? We've had no community process on that. Um I do not know all of the details of the stormwater master plan. I do know that there were meetings uh at the end of the year specifically around the stormwater master plan. This should be on the Summer Voice website if Stephen is still listening. And I hope I didn't miss anybody.
Great. Um so I think with that, we can move to adjourn. Uh does everyone agree? I think we can do a simple nod on this. Okay, sounds good. And we will see you all next week.